Yeah, thank you. It was bound to happen.
So good. Lindsay tried to leave me once alone with the system. I have refused. I could do it. Anyway, it's good. I think the other should be coming around any moment and then we can. Were you able to make somebody else co-host, maybe Leslie Ann or something? Just in case something happens on your system, if you go over their person name on the three little dots. Okay, perfect. Thanks. Welcome, Councilor. I think we're.
Are we ready?
Rebecca's got us back on track, so.
Is everybody okay? Counselor Ludwig, I don't see Counselor Lonely. Good afternoon. I would wait one minute for Counselor Counselor Lonely because he was he was here, right? He was with us. Yeah.
Any chance you texted him, Councilor? No?
I just did. I just texted. Did send Counselor Lonely a text.
Well, thank you. Oh, I don't want this hand. Okay, that makes sense. I see Counselor Lonely. Corporate Officer, are we ready to proceed? Are we live already?
Yes, we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, good afternoon. I'm Deputy Mayor DeAndrade. So, sorry, we had some hiccups this morning, but this after, sorry, just now. But I would like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Home Meeting of February 16, 2021, held electronically as per the ministerial order M1922020. I'd also like to acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. And I would like now to call the media to order. And we'll call for approval of the agenda first. Counselor Crow, Counselor Ludwig, thank you. All in favor of the approval? Thank you. So, the first, oh, actually, I would also like to request a recommendation to receive all presentation and reports on the agenda at once. Thank you, Counselor Crow. Do you have a second, Counselor Ludwig? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So, our first report is from Sergeant Don Newman, RCMP. And all the, actually, all the presentation today will be quarterly reports. So Sergeant Don Newman, please. You're mute.
Oh, do you hear me? Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, some technical difficulties to start, so.
We all had today.
Yes, it's been challenging. So, I'll send Staff Sergeant Helen's regrets to start. She's unavailable for this meeting, so. I'll present the quarterly report. I'm assuming everyone has a copy in front of them. What I would like to suggest before I start, there seems to be some pretty limited info on here. I know there's more fulsome statistics that maybe we should look to present in future quarters because I see the only two crime types that are really specifically mentioned in this are theft from motor vehicles and break and enter. So, it doesn't give a a complete picture, I guess, of what's going on in the town of Gibson's, but briefly put over the quarter, crime was down significantly within the town of Gibson's. The numbers you can see for theft of and and break and enter for the quarter in total. You know, over a three-quarter average, you see, I guess, they were up a little for break and enters, down from a three-year average of up, sorry, from a three-year average of six. Theft of motor vehicles. They were two down from a three-year average of four. And then if you get into the the individual month, you see a change, but not a lot. Just to put this in perspective, though, that weren't in this report, for the quarter, calls itself in the town of Gibson's were down significantly compared to 2019. They were down approximately 25%, and they were down probably closer to 33% from 2018, which is a good sign. It shows that crime is down, and this is in contrary to, for that same quarter, calls for the coast when taken in totality were up, albeit a little bit. So, that decline is good for the town of Gibson, especially in relation to the rest of the coast. Does anyone have any questions?
Counselor Crow.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your report, Sergeant Newman. The last report we had from Sergeant Hallam, she indicated that she was working towards having regular staff working out of the Gibson's detachment in in the new year, and I'm just wondering if that has actually started to happen?
That's a constant goal for us, but because of our limited resources and we're in a challenging time for resourcing right now, we sometimes are following the calls, to put it bluntly. We can have two and three members in Gibson's at a time, or, I mean, we've had a lot happening in the inland or up, you know, Garden Bay, Egmont area, so unfortunately, we haven't been able to permanently place that member, but that is the goal. The frontline policing are directed to try and ensure that there's a member in Gibson's, but I would be lying to you if I said we've managed to to have that as an absolute for 24 hours.
Thank you, sir.
The Counselor has a comment or Counselor Crow? You seem to have another question.
Well, just in follow-up to Sergeant Newman's comment, I know Sergeant Hallam, also in her last report, indicated that she was anticipating new members on the coast, and I know there was some funding approved for additional members as that happened.
No, the the two funding streams would be through the District of Seashell, and I believe their decision on that, but they would speak better to that, though. I believe it's for May before they even approve that, if it is in fact approved, and then from a provincial side, that process is still not even to the provincial level to approve yet, so we're talking well into the into this calendar year, so we're nowhere near seeing any boots to the ground, and even if those positions were approved, you would still have a significant lag before that actual approval results in someone appearing here and, like I said, and having boots on the ground.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sergeant. Counselor Ludwig, please.
Yeah, thanks for your report, Sergeant. I'm just more curious about your perspective or thoughts on what additional categories you think we should be including in these quarterly reports?
Well, I mean, mental health calls are definitely, I think that's very topical, you know, not only across the Sunshine Coast, but across British Columbia, Canada, North America, so I think that's a good capture of of what's going on from from, you know, because this is a real a report on our work product as well as, you know, just the general, I guess, the the crime conditions within Gibson's, and I think although mental health isn't a crime, it does give a better picture of what we're doing. You know, motor vehicle, I see there's, you have some, if you look below, there's some road safety. But that doesn't broken down into the town of Gibson's, so I think it would be more useful for for this committee if we provided more specific data for like violation tickets, for impaired driving, for collisions that relate specifically to Gibson's versus just collectively for the entire.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Counselor Crow.
Thank you. To your your issue with the mental health calls, Sergeant, I just came from the CAT Committee meeting, and it it's been an ongoing issue with that committee that the RCMP is often being taxed with mental health calls, and it's it's, you know, basically, it's not in your wheelhouse, yet you're having to deal with it. So, I think there needs to be greater pressure brought by the communities for funding for better boots on the ground, to use your term, of mental health workers. I know there is a little progress been made there, but still not enough to address the need, so those statistics, if if they can be broken out, certainly would be useful in justifying the argument for additional funding to coastal health for our mental health workers.
Yes, that's right. We do work very closely with mental health and addictions on the coast, so. And we are making progress, but it's a it's a community and a social issue, and we're just one part of it.
Thank you, Sergeant Newman. Is any Counselor willing to discuss more or have any other question? Okay, Sergeant Dunmill, thank you very much, and I'll believe I'll perhaps I'll see you again next meeting.
Thank you.
Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you. So, our next report is from Chief Administrative Office and Director of Corporate Officer. It's a departmental operational report as well. Please, Corporate Officer or Chief Administrative Officer, please.
Hello, everyone. You have in front of you the staff report dated February 16th that includes the quarterly reports. I'll bring to your attention the COVID-19 update. We continue to operate under the orders of the Minister and the Bonnie Henry, Dr. Bonnie Henry. And so, as you know, we've had increased safety restrictions put in place in the fall, and we continue to operate under those in the last months of 2020. It's my understanding that council and staff began engaging on a review of the strategic priorities plan, and that that continues to be a work in progress. I think Manny could probably report better on the Healthy Harbor project and the Source to Sea project. And I think he is still here. Let's see if he is. I think he's still here. And he could probably speak better to those aspects of the report on the Healthy Harbor project and the Source to Sea project.
Oh, good afternoon. Sorry, just just follow to what Rebecca mentioned as well. I want to sort of also acknowledge on the rest of our team that we've we've prepared this report. We're trying to expand this report a little bit as well, and want to recognize that we've got some information from Elizabeth, and she's online as well, if you want to to hear from her, and that some of the projects that we have here are moving on to under project management from Infrastructure Services, and Michelle can can speak to that further. For us, I'll just report primarily on the Healthy Harbor project. We're since last presented the report, I believe in December, we've received some some recent information around the results of the dive that was done, so we'll have some more information from council, just more detailed analysis of the eelgrass mapping. And Graham is working with Leslie Ann and planning stuff on on an upcoming report for that, so we're expecting him to come in March with a work plan to present as well. That's mostly what I have to, I wanted to ask Elizabeth if she wants to talk a little bit about the strategic plan or some of the communications, as you can see, just from what's done from Elizabeth alone, it's I wonder how we managed even to do a quarter on that when she wasn't around. So, I see that she is. I don't know if you want to add a little bit more to that on the strategic plan in particular, Elizabeth, just in terms of the next steps, please. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, I can add a little bit of detail about what's coming up. So, as we said in the quarterly report, the community survey closed on January 25th. We had a total of 101 people participate, and most of the respondents were residents of the town of Gibson's in the age group of 50 to 80 years old. 82% agreed that the strategic plan accurately reflects the town's challenges and objectives. However, many people also had suggestions for projects that they would like to see as add to our list of action items. So, right now, I'm working on a report to summarize the survey results and group together some of the common suggestions received. I'll present that report to council on March 2nd. And then after that, once you, once I presented the report and you've had a chance to review the various comments that have been received, then we can meet again and discuss any further changes that you'd like to make to the strategic plan going forward.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I don't know if council has any questions, if the committee has any questions from from Rebecca or myself or Elizabeth for that matter.
Sorry, it was mute. Counselor Crow, please.
Thank you, Chair. It's not so much a question. I just wanted to really thank our Communications Officer. I think Elizabeth is doing an amazing job, and I think we're sort of the envy of the coast when it comes to communicating and getting ahead of issues proactively as much as as humanly possible. So, I'd certainly like to extend my congratulations to her for the job that she is doing. It's you know, as the CAO suggested, we'd probably be lost without her, but, you know, it's a great job, and I really appreciate the you know, where, just how she handles the whole situation. I also get communication directives from the Regional District and you know, they they're really hard to even get your attention, let alone to read them, and what Elizabeth's putting out for us in the community is just immensely helpful, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very kind of you.
Thank you, Counselor Crew. Counselor Ludwig, please.
I could just say ditto, but essentially, you're going to hear this from me either a lot throughout today's meeting, or I'll just say it now, and it applies to all the reports on the agenda. I'm just once again amazed at the amount of work that this team is putting through this office, so every report I opened up today, it's it's just really, really impressive, so I just want to say thank you to Elizabeth and Manny and Rebecca. And I'll be saying that over and over again today because it really is impressive, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Lonely, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, maybe ask Manny, like, the Healthy Harbor project, like, do you foresee, like, this year like, actually implementing some some measures to protect eelgrass or some measures to create new types of mooring out there? Generally, I guess that was my question, whether or not we're going to start a, the process will be, people can only moor certain areas. Do you, is that what you you think will transpire this year?
Through you, Chair DeAndrade, certainly is. We're working towards that. I know Grant, Graham has also been looking at some some funding for for buoys for delineation of of these areas, and he was mentioning a meeting with planning, so we can be certain around things like zoning and so on, that it it matches, it's aligned with that. But in a practical way, aside from sort of money to buy rope and some signs, in a practical way, it's it's be a decision of council, a meeting with which we should have one or two, as Manny is necessary with the folks down at the harbor, because I think it's, you know, it will affect some of them, but for the most part, it's a convenience that's there, particularly with the barges that you know, it's it's been somewhat unregulated, and I don't think will be you know, poorly received necessarily. I think those folks also work and live in these waters and understand what we're trying to do, and is scientifically backed as far as the the research has been done. I also think that around another cleanup, it's quite likely as well, and I don't believe there will be any other eelgrass mapping to happen within the harbor, or I think perhaps around the Georgia straight side.
What about the, like, derelict vehicles and stuff like that? I know there's one sunken sailboat close to armors, I guess, between armors and, I mean, you can just barely see the mast coming out of the water, and then there's that giant yacht, old Woody, that's been floating out there in the wind for probably well over a year now. I've never seen it move. Do we have any? I guess that would somehow find its way into a healthy harbor or some some mooring challenges and so on and so forth.
Can answer that. Does you see it? Counselor Crow has his hand up, and if you want to add anything else there.
With reference to the sailboat Counselor Lonely, it is being dealt with with the by the Ministry of the Environment and and vessels of concern, they're onto it, and there's a local salvage company that's just waiting for the approval from VOC to remove it. It's sadly, it's very typical of this current situation of, you know, not proper means for vessel disposal, so people just abandon them, and it's one of three vessels that we could trace back to the same owners that have all been of issue, so. Yeah, it's it's, but it is being dealt with. The local people are just waiting for the word from VOC to take it away.
Sure, I can just just complete that, answer the Counselor Lonely. It just, I think what we we try to instill, put in in terms of a process is to assess, identify, and so on, and I know that there's more dive, more errors to be recognized as well, and from there, just make a work plan, because some of these are quite heavy, and they require quite a bit of preparation with proper diving and systems, but we we have a system now, and I I think within five years, we should have a very healthy harbor, more so than it even is now.
Thank you. I actually have a question perhaps for Elizabeth. The way we are collecting the survey data, are we getting addresses attached to that? I'm just like a concern if if many people can have different emails and and send in case, I mean, in this particular case, it's not, it's not really a voting occasion, but if we get to the point of trying to get really a grasp of the residents, so how can we avoid, or how this is being done to avoid, like, duplication?
Oh, duplication. So, one way that we avoid duplication is that the survey is set so that you can only complete it once from the same device. So, if you're determined to submit more than one survey from you, then I suppose you could use a laptop and a desktop and your phone or something like that, but there there is that protection in place. We do not collect addresses. For this particular survey, we asked which neighborhood people lived in, and we did that partly because we were asking for ideas of little projects that they may have noticed in their neighborhood that they would like council, I guess, to try to find a little bit of money for or to address. So, yeah, as I say, the, you could conceivably complete more than one survey, but I don't think that it would really greatly impact or change the result.
Okay, so I can also be somewhere else and just say that I'm from this community, so there's no really way of tracking.
No, there's, there is no way of tracking. We're relying on people to be honest in their answers.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, no. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
So, thank you, CAO and Corporate Officer, and Elizabeth, and I believe Michelle as well for the report. And any other discussion regarding this report? Okay, so there's a recommendation here that the report, oh, no, we already receive all the reports. Okay, so, sorry, I forgot about that. Okay, we can move to the next report from the Director of Finance. Departmental Operational Report. Please, Director of Finance.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So, quarter four is a busy time for the Finance Department. From a collection point of view, part of the focus related to the fall utility billing and the property tax follow-up, both of those processes went went really well. In addition to the various activities that are listed, we also worked on, a big focus was the water and sewer long-term financial plans with your which you're aware of, because those were presented just recently to you in late January. We also had our interim audit for 2020, so the auditors come usually in person, but this time it was virtually and over three days, so we prepped that audit work, so that was conducted in the fall this year as well. From a HR point of view, we were quite busy with a variety of recruitments. In addition, we had select staff participate in some first aid training, and it was interesting to note this year, we had a total of 22 town employees who completed completed the first aid training, and it really shows a level of interest in our from our staff in maintaining a safe and healthy workplace. That was a really positive event that happened in the middle of COVID. It was quite wonderful to have that kind of participation. From a collections point of view, on page three, you can see that the receivable balances are shown, and it shows that we're at levels that are comparable to last year, which is a really good sign considering that we're in the in a pandemic, and remember, in the early in the year, we weren't really sure how owners would be able to respond to, you know, usual taxation utility bills, and it's clear that they were able to manage with the supports that were in place by the province and the federal government, so that was really really good to see. The financial reports let balances, they're still 2019 because we're still working on finalizing 2020 right now, so those will be available by the next quarter for sure. On page four, I included a COVID-19 update, just to give you an update on the costs that we're seeing for that, or the way the way we're spending those funds, and you can remember that council authorized about $322,000 in December. And as of December 31st, we've incurred about $307,000 of those kind of expenses. And again, these are preliminary because we're still working on finalizing year end, but that'll be available in the next little while. I did show a breakdown of the costs on page five, and that is the categories are consistent with the grant criteria categories, which is how they're going to be reported in our financial statements this year. There's going to be a new schedule at the very end of the financial statements that will be showing the COVID grant funding and how it was spent and how much is left, so. And as mentioned, that is going to be finalized once we do our year-end accounting entries, which we're working on right now, and then I'll also be including, this will be a standard section in my quarterly report for the next little while, while we're dealing with these funds and while we're still in the pandemic, just to keep you up to date. And so, in terms of a preview of next quarter, we're now in our busiest busiest season, and so we're wrapping up 2020 year-end, and then we're also working on and presenting 2021 budget, so it's a bit of a collision at the moment, but it's year end and then we're also working on and presenting twenty twenty-one budget. So it's a bit of a collision at the moment, but it's it's manageable. Now, the next budget meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-third, and that's going to be, we'll be presenting the twenty twenty-one preliminary operations budget. And also I'll be adding a couple of reports, one for garbage and organics rates and also the finalizing the water and sewer rates at that time. And our agenda will be coming out expected. We're probably looking at mid Friday for that this week. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Over your counsel, any question? Apparently there are no questions. I actually have, it's just a clarification. I remember last time you explained, but I think I cannot fully recall our debt. What is the percentage that that we can have? There's a maximum, I I know is approximately, I I believe is approximately twelve million. We are getting close.
Yes, and that number is not at the top of my head, but actually I was working a report just recently about that. The debt, the debt limit has to do with it's a comparison of how much the debt servicing costs are, which is the principal interest payments as compared to how much revenue we collect in taxation. And we still have a fair bit of room, just over, I think, a million dollars in terms of that would be the debt servicing. And that would translate into, I think it was about twelve million, but it really depends on the term of the debt and the interest rate at the time. But it's really, it's really about how much the payments versus how much capacity revenue we have.
Okay, yeah, no, it's good. It's just remember. And another question as well. I see that we had a by-law enforcement officer casual. So what do you really mean by casual? It's just when our regular by-law officer is is away, is off or away?
That's right. And from in terms of casual, that's casual versus a regular employee who has a specific appointment to a position. This is a casual employee who is available to be basically on call when we need. And it's cover when the by-law officer does go away on vacation or isn't available.
Okay, I was just like, because it didn't say part-time, so just try, I mean, I understand the concept of casual, but I was just trying to understand in terms of how much, because I know sometimes we have a shortage of law enforcement in town, so.
And this was primarily this year was for coverage when by law was away. Often in the past, it's been for you know, when the person's away on a conference for a week, it's nice to have someone in or vacation for several weeks, but there there is the option to call a person and if we need more coverage depending on the circumstances. So so casual being just available when we call them, which is.
That's great. Thank you very much, counsel. Any other question? Seeing none, I would move to the next report. Thank you very much, Director of Finance, Director of Planning. Quarterly report as well, please.
Thank you. So this is the quarterly report for planning, building and by-law enforcement. The biggest, the biggest thing we've noticed from COVID and working from home are the increase in email inquiries. A lot of us are now just dealing with a lot more emails. We haven't tracked them in the past, but that is something we might consider doing. Um, in terms of projects, for the affordable housing projects, the Franklin Road project, when I wrote the report, it was near completion. On Friday, our building official did a final inspection and and issued an occupancy permit. So that's exciting for that project to have met that milestone. They need to finish up some servicing and finish up some landscaping, but the house, the buildings are safe now. So that's a big milestone. Five seven one Shaw Road, so that's a seventy units. They are still securing their funding approvals. So that hasn't moved past that point. Supported housing, the forty units on School Road, the last inspection was on February ninth. So there's still lots to do there, but the the crew is working long hours and they're trying to trying to finish up all the requirements so that they can get an occupancy permit as well. And then the Housing Needs Implementation Framework, so that came to council. And council has requested a report on how to prioritize and implement the actions with timelines. So that is something we'll be working on in the next quarter, probably, or or this year. We might get a new budget line item for that project. Short-term rentals. That council has asked for a report on regulating unhosed short-term rentals. So that report will be prepared for council later this quarter, early quarter two. The community amenity and affordable housing contribution policy, that is is still underway. So the consultants have been crunching numbers and doing a financial analysis to look at what the land lift would be for upzoning based on OCP densities. And they came up with a variety of different scenarios. But they're planning to draft that policy and present it this quarter, quarter one, this quarter. What they're looking at is breaking it down on a dollar per square footage. So depending on how big the building is, they would have to pay per square footage potentially. Something council will need to make a decision on is what percentage of in of that contribution would go into an affordable housing reserve fund versus a community amenity contribution fund. So more to come on that. We don't have all, we don't have all the information yet. In terms of the garden suite policy review, so this quarter, quarter four, staff were working on developing stakeholders surveys to be launched in quarter one. So the survey feedback will inform criteria on the expansion of the garden suite areas. And we've had a lot of inquiries for people wanting to build garden suites. So there is a lot of interest in expanding it. One survey has been launched to the own, to the owners who have authorized development permits. So since the garden suite program was launched, we've had fifteen development permits approved for garden suites. The invasive plant management bylaw, since we presented that to council, council requested that we invite an expert to educate the Planning and Development Committee. We've reached out and haven't had any response. So we're still working on trying to get someone here to present to council about best management practices or invasive plant management and and to be available to answer any questions. We also rewrote the anti-noise bylaw, so that was approved by council in quarter four. We're also working on updating the development permit area number nine guideline. So that's the Gibson's Aquifer Development Permit Area. So Waterline Resources has reviewed our development permit area and the big change there is there's going to be language around protecting the Capilano Aquifer, which sits on top of the Gibson's Aquifer. So right now, the language is all around protection of the Gibson's Aquifer. So it'll be, it'll expand a little bit. In terms of the tree preservation bylaws, staff have been, our our team, planning and building and by law have all been working with infrastructure services to to work on efficient processes for reviewing trees and and tree cutting and all that. The enforcement of that bylaw as well. The Advisory Design Panel is new, so that came up in quarter four and we've prepared a bylaw and that was adopted. So the ads were published in on Friday and again, they'll be published again this Friday. So hopefully we'll get some applicants and can launch that new design panel in March. The public notification radius, that for the development applications review, so that is on that bylaw is on tonight's council agenda for the first three readings. So that's increasing the notifications to a hundred meters for zoning OCP and temporary use permits. The development permit review process. So so that is a report that council requested for more information on a peer review process and public input opportunities for development permits. So staff are going to set up a workshop with council as staff and council workshop about development permit processes. And then we'll follow up with a report. So those are the planning projects and thank you to the corporate team for for mentioning the recreational water bylaw. I forgot to put that on this list, but I did have a a meeting on that and we are planning to amend that bylaw to develop eelgrass conservation areas and look at where mooring is appropriate and not appropriate. And then look at the enforcement of that bylaw as well. So that that is on the work plan for quarter one. In terms of development applications, quarter four was the busiest of the year for the planning department. We had forty percent of development permits and other major development applications for twenty twenty received in this final quarter. So we had a total of fifty-nine development applications, one board of variance, thirty-one development permits, six variances, three OCP amendments. Sign and subdivision, not too big of a deal. Temporary use, no, sorry. We had five zoning amendments as well. So it was a, it was a busy year. I won't go through the development applications. If council has any questions, I can address them. In terms of building permits, the pace appears steady and unaffected by COVID nineteen in the building department. So the revenue was on par with last year and number of permits also on par with last year. Bylaw enforcement had a huge impact with COVID, COVID nineteen. So the end of Q four in twenty twenty saw what was the busiest year since two thousand nine. The average number of complaints is two hundred and sixty complaints in a year. And what we received was five hundred and fifty-nine complaint files. So we more than doubled in complaints. And those were mostly, oh, forty-nine of those were related to COVID and reporting that people weren't following provincial health orders. So our bylaw enforcement officer is working closely with Vancouver Coastal Health to work on that. So that is a very high-level summary of of the quarterly report.
Thank you, Director of Planning. Does counsel have any question? Or comment? Counselor Lumley, please.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Once again, very thorough. I had just a couple of questions. The the got this two sixty-three on the development permit applications. The number seven and number eight. Two sixty-three Gower Point Road. Okay, I just, I I just kind of didn't understand. It says description on this number seven was a permit for the aquifer and then the current status on number eight, it was withdrawn, the geotechnical engineer submitting materials showing the property was outside EPA one area. Is that?
Yes. So the aquifer was contamination, if I recall this correctly. We had to, we got their plans reviewed to make sure it wasn't going to contaminate because it is a, well, the the site was contaminated. It received a certificate of compliance. And the foundation plan is not going to contaminate the aquifer. So that's number seven. Number eight. The area was within a geotechnical hazard according to our map, but when they ground-truthed it, the geotech engineer said that it was, it was, there were no geotechnical concerns. It's outside of the geotech area.
Okay. And my other que, I I know you, with the bylaw, I know Sue has her hands full. I just, were any of those complaints? Because I know like I get a lot of complaints down by the sea path, because there's just I mean, one result of COVID was it seemed like everybody without got a dog. You have all these people like, like some days down there, like you, you can barely get through the sea path because like there's like, you know, literally fifty people with dogs down there. So I don't know. I mean, it's almost worth, I don't know, looking at in the future because you know, I got bit by a dog. So and obviously your report outlines three other people that were bit as well. So I certainly wouldn't want people to be discouraged from going down there. I I don't want to see the sea path turn into a dog park necessarily and have other people afraid to go for a walk on the sea path or afraid to go anywhere on there because there's so many dogs. So anyway, that was just a thought.
Yeah, she is doing daily patrols and when we've had Peter come in, who's our casual, he does daily, he does patrols as well in the seawall. But she's, she's monitoring it closely.
Yeah, it will be interesting just to follow up on this to have a better understanding, perhaps certain times of the year. I I know the beaches are restricted, right, for dogs from April to October.
I can't recall.
I wonder, it would be kind of interesting because I can see this situation perhaps happening again. Director of Planning, do you have any feedback on that?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Well, I was, I I understand that the beaches, there's a a time of the year that the dogs can go to the beach and other times they cannot. So but just considering the amount, you know, of people now, I mean, perhaps they have, there are more dogs or people are going more, going out with dogs if there's a just a a understanding or a possibility to understand perhaps some restrictions or some, just some, some better understanding what we could do because I cannot see I I received myself a lot of complaints about dogs and it seems a seawall, it's a place that people, you know, would go there with dogs and I mean, I don't want to talk about necessarily restriction right now, but if there's, if if you envision, if you anticipate any study with the bylaw, trying to understand how we could remediate this process through perhaps even a restriction in the future.
Yeah, I think maybe we could look at when dogs are allowed off-leash. I don't, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, so don't recall the dates exactly, but there are on-leash times of the month, a time, times of the year and off-leash. But on the sea wall, they're always supposed to be on leash. And so when the the daily patrols are to make sure that that they're on leash. And if it's after hours, then then we're not patrolling. So that that could be another, another thing to look into.
Okay, it's just a, because I can see the situation slowly escalating. Maybe not drastically, but slowly. So this council, any other counselor would like, Counselor Ludwig, please.
Yeah, thank you, Director of Planning. Like Counselor Lumley said, it's a great report. I'm just wondering if you could, if just top of mind, could think of some of the other kind of key categories of complaints that stood out to you during due to COVID or just this past year, if there's certain categories that stand out to you. I mean, it makes sense that we're all at home and probably getting on each other's nerves a little bit, perhaps.
Yeah, so I mean, what Sue flagged in this report were were the serious dog attacks. Bears getting into garbage. And then the reporting provincial health orders being broken. Those are the the three main ones. I have to look through the spreadsheet of complaints and to summarize them even more than that.
That's fine. I'm just curious to be your opinion. Thanks.
Okay, no problem.
Any other question? Okay, I'll have more. Director of Planning, just some clarification because you mentioned that the affordable the supported, supporting affordable, supportive housing. There's still in in, has not like ready to be occupied. But I got, I got the understanding that the tenants would move on the third week of of or or soon. So what is more, at least some idea of the timeline when the building will be ready for occupancy?
Yeah, I think that, I think the construction team is working like long hours. I got an email this morning saying they're I got an email this morning saying they're going to put in a sixteen hour day. So they're, they're trying to put in long hours to try and meet B C Housing's timeline. But we need the architect to approve, sign off and make sure the building is safe and approved before we issue an occupancy permit. So they they had their last inspection on February ninth. And and there was an expect, an inspection not too long before that, like a week or two before that. So they're having regular inspections and trying to meet B C Housing's timeline. But it's it's tight, it's really tight.
And what exactly is the B C Housing timeline?
If I may, Counselor, that timeline, at best, is the twenty third. But they, there's no one at risk anymore from not having a space. So they, I think we're within a couple of weeks of having the folks moved in. The staff, I mean, the building is, it's, it's already safe to occupy. And I say that because staff from Rain City have been there for their training and so on. So there's a lot of consultants and people have to, all the consultant, not consultants, but contractors involved have to go in and verify their own equipment. So it's that type of commissioning and so on that happening at the moment. Matter of days, which is, it's good, but too many days, but we're getting there.
No, 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 I'm just trying to understand timelines. Thank you, Counselor Crow.
Thank you, Chair. Just further to what the C A O was saying, the meetings we've had between Rain City and B C Housing, which council have been invited to. At the last meeting, they said they were looking at the twenty third. I just came, the cat meeting, I just came from B C Housing are saying the twenty fourth. But the big problem is it's a moving target. Every time they do an inspection and they find something that needs to be fixed, you know, it causes a delay. You know, if you recall, it was hoped that people were going to be in there last December. But the other issue is, and I think it's of significant importance, that Rain City staff are on site and they are training. So at the moment, and everyone that is slated to go into the project is currently in safe housing. So it's, you know, it is a bit of a moving target, which is sort of frustrating. Because, you know, it's, you know, trying to say it's going to be this date, it varies. But the, my understanding from the meeting I was at earlier, that the residents are all being informed as to, you know, move in date. And just to clarify on that, everyone won't be moving in at once. It's a, it's a phased in gradual move in. So people can get sort of familiarized with the building and staff can get, become familiarized with the residents. So it'll be people moving in over a phase period.
Thank you. I have a, I have my last question. And this regards invasive plant management by law. And CEO, did you have a chance to discuss anything with the S C R D regarding, or perhaps Counselor Crow regarding the incinerator, a possibility of purchasing an incinerator?
I raised it last week at a meeting with Ministry of Highways and their consultants that are working on invasive species management. It's, and it's on the discussion. So it, we haven't gotten a final answer from the S C R D yet. But it's only, we put it there as part of their discussion and how they're designing that. I'm not sure that there's full agreement on whether that's a good thing or not. But we're still in active discussions on that.
Councilor Crow.
So you chair to the C A O. When I was sitting on the regional district and there was conversation about the South Coast green waste being put out for tender. And I know the regional district was supposed to be dealing, negotiating with the town of Gibson's for that it would stay in the same space, just the operation of it would be taken away from the town of Gibson's and to be put out to a subcontractor. Has anything progressed further on that?
Yes, it has. We're for the last probably ten years, I would say we've had this arrangement where we provide the site and the staff and they pay us for the staff time. But they want to expand the site and manage it themselves. And they've asked for a lease document that provides them the site. And then so that gives them the certainty to go out with a call. We're in the middle of back and forth with surveys and getting a draft together. Once I finalize that with them, then I can bring it to council for your your consideration as well. And after that, they will have some comfort to continue to do that, who would be an operator working on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. So any other, oh, Councilor Crow.
I'm just in follow up to that. My understanding was from, again, the conversation at the R D board was that they would put it out to a subcontractor. And a couple of the subcontractors that I had spoken to who were interested, they'd already sort of talked about arrangements with either, with respect to hazardous waste is dealing with how sound pulp and paper through their hog fuel program or dealing with Julian Bertnik, who also has a burning facility at the gravel pit. But again, it's just getting the infrastructure in place to be able to deal with invasive species separately that they don't get into the the composting mix.
Thank you, that's exciting. Are you ready to move on? Okay, so this is our last report from Director of Infrastructure Services, please.
Thank you, Chair. First off, just want to mention that we have managed to hire a capital project coordinator. And so I expect to see more movement on on some of our capital works this year, which will be great to see. The first thing I just want to bring your attention to is item three point three on page ten of my report regarding the building assessments. And those assessments have been completed just recently. And we're just analyzing that information. And we'll be including more than one budget item in this year's five year financial plan to address the identified issues, risk, safety, that sort of thing would be taking the priority. And then from there, we would be prioritizing the remaining identified improvements and putting those in our, or scheduling those in our capital works plan moving forward. Item seven point two on page seventeen, Gibson's Way improvements phase two. That started off very slowly just because of the weather. Not only can, is it difficult to pour in the rain, the cold weather has also slowed construction. We need five degrees and rising for outside temperature for pouring concrete. So they got started and then cut shut down because of the cold weather. So hopefully we'll see them start up again there. I don't know if anyone of you had a opportunity to drop in on our little virtual open house we had for the North Fletcher residents. But we had fifteen participants to showed up to the meeting. And some of those participants represented more than one person on the other end of, on the other end of the line, which was a decent turnout. And this was in regards to paving North Fletcher in a standard that is consistent with our subdivision and development bylaw for a local road, which is similar to, well, is the same as Goddard Road in Parkland and the extension of Aurora Way. And that's where you have a one meter concrete band on each side. And and then you have the four meters of asphalt in the middle with a meandering alignment. And the intent of that is the, the concrete bands can be driven on. But visually, you have four meter wide asphalt paved surface, which visually narrows the road, although overall from outside of concrete to outside of concrete, it's the same width as a, as a local road. So North Fletcher has been identified as our, our bike route for less experienced, less confident riders. And the idea is that we are trying to slow, slow down traffic. This came up prompted partly in in regards to a meeting that we have with track. But also it's just an opportunity to be able to implement our standard local road cross section for an existing local road as opposed to just paving it in its current straight alignment. The concern, of course, along there is speed. And if we were to remain with the straight alignment of the road, we would be looking at putting in advisory bike lanes, which are the dashed lines a meter and a half off edge of curb. And it would also require some sort of traffic calming to slow traffic down. So the intent is that this cross section, the meandering cross section with concrete bands would slow traffic as well as create a more visually appealing road. Residents had a number of good questions. We were able to address, I think, pretty much all of them. And overall, the response was pretty favorable. So I'll be reporting back to council on that for confirmation, one way or the other, is to whether they would like to, whether council would like to see the new local standard. I call it new, it's been in place since two thousand twelve. But whether you'd like to see that or just repaved on its existing alignment. Item eight point four on page twenty of my report. Parkland is got a little bit of a slow start, but they have started. And we've been working with them on creating an attractive stormwater management pond at the north end of the the south end of their development adjacent to the tennis courts and and on to their property as well. Eight point six, we've already mentioned that they're currently working on the O'Shea frontage for the supportive housing. And we're in fairly close contact with them on that. Going down to section ten on page twenty three, item ten point one. We've started, more to the point, Michelle has started to implement the tree preservation bylaw. And to date, I'd received twenty two applications for tree cutting permits. Nineteen of those did result in permits being issued. Thirteen of them for hazardous tree removals, and so no charge for those ones. And then six others for infrastructure related or within building envelope site servicing. And five fines were also issued for tree cutting contrary to the bylaw. And most, if not all of those, had had previous contact with the natural asset technician and were aware of the restrictions and and chose to proceed anyway. We do have a list of of recommended amendments that we will be coming back to council with, along with a tree policy somewhere in the beginning of the second quarter of twenty twenty one. Just seeing if there's, I think there's one other thing that I wanted to bring your attention. Yeah, item ten point six, page twenty six of my report source to see. You've had a bit of an overview of that from the C A O. But I wanted to draw your attention to the last paragraph in that section where partial funding for this project comes from the Healthy Watershed Initiative grant. I believe it's in the tune of eighty five thousand dollars. And one of the requirements of that grant is for staff to provide plans to support meaningful engagement, employment opportunities and outcomes that serve First Nations and Indigenous partners in project implementation and learning. And staff are suggesting that to partially meet these requirements, council could consider implementing the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, which is got the acronym UNDRIP as well as the T R C, the Truth and Reconciliation Committee Commission's call to action. And if council was, or committee was interested in for that council, we could ask for a resolution or a recommendation from you that staff report back regarding those, those two potential initiatives to provide a little bit more context and information for you. Item ten point eight, White Tower Pond Expansion. We're putting together tender documents as we speak. So that'll be one of our first capital projects that will be happening in in twenty twenty one. That's it from my section before I switch over to manager of maintenance and operations. Wondering if anyone has any questions about that section before we move on. I could be happy to take any questions now if you'd like.
Thank you, Director of Infrastructure. Thank you for your report. Council, any question? For? Councilor Ludwig, please.
Thank you for that report. That's excellent, always so detailed. I don't know if this is, if I should be asking now or later, but it just occurred to me. I was wondering if when we do our budget planning exercise for this fiscal, would it be possible to also get a list of the grants that staff plans on applying for and have some discussion around what's available and where we think we're going to be directing our efforts, I guess, because obviously funding opportunities, yeah, shifts shifts focus. If there's a funding opportunity, you want to take advantage of it. And so it'd be nice to have some of those discussions as part of, as part of a budget planning exercise. Would that be possible? It just seems like there's a lot of grants out there right now. And I, I don't know what they are. I would like to know what they are. I would like to have some discussion with council about what we should be applying for and how we should be directing our, you know, how we should be working with staff's time and effort to get key priorities accomplished.
Well, what we did last year and possibly the year before as well was we, if you recall, we did, we used to have category A, B, C, and D, which was A was committed and D was discretionary and then B and C were in in between there. And then we also added an E, which was projects that we did not have funding for, but could be a potential grant project or a community amenity. Should a developer you know, be required to provide amenities? And the reason for that was so that we could have that discussion upfront, have budget time and council identify ahead of time what those potential projects could be for grant applications. One of the other things that we run into though, as well is, well, actually, one of the reasons for doing that was because a lot of times we don't get advance notice on on grant opportunities. They, they come across our, our desk. And by the time we report to council and ask for input, there's not enough time to actually write the grant and and because, you know, it's usually a pretty tight timeline. So that's the reason for the identification of those, those projects upfront. I'm not sure if Director of Finance wants to mention anything in addition to that about any grant opportunities that are in the wings. We do have, we do also identify projects that are grant funded. as well as projects that we have already applied for through grant funding and may not have received those funds or received word one way or the other. Director of Finance, I don't know if you've got anything to add to that or not.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah. Part of the, so that I think addresses the majority of the grant issues, part of the, well, I guess the ones I'm thinking about the ones that we have applied and haven't received a decision on. We have a few of those out right now, but those will end up primarily on the twenty twenty one capital projects. I think those are covered as well as as Director of Infrastructure mentioned. They do come up quite quickly. It's difficult sometimes to foresee what's going to be available, but that has been, all the grants that are available have definitely been on our radar and we are making sure that if we can find a fit within our work plan that we will make an attempt to pursue it.
Thank you. I just, I just feel like it's a bit of a black hole for me. I don't know what the grants are. I'd love to just see a list of what we're applying for, but.
It, I mean, it is a bit of a a black hole. You're right, because we staff don't know what's coming down the pipe either. But we will be able to provide you with grants that we've applied for. As I say, potential projects that we could that will potential grant projects if the opportunity should arise. And, you know, what is, what we grant funding, we've already received. So I think between what we've received, what we've applied for and and the projects that are eligible or or could be eligible for grant funding is we probably have roughly the same amount of information we would. If there are any that we are aware of that we've heard of coming down the down the pipe, then then we could certainly mention those as well. But as the Director of Finance mentioned, this, you know, they're they're quite often that we just get very, very short notice and and, you know, by the way, next week you need to have your application in. So we don't, there's nothing that we have that gives any indication of what is going to come up during the year or anything like that, as wonderful as that would be.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other question, comment?
So one other question, sorry, Counselor, I wasn't sure if you were taking a breath there for a question or not.
I will.
One of the, but one of the things was whether or not you wanted a recommendation in regards to UNDRIP and and the T R C for the for staff to report back on that.
Yes, I I think, yeah, I think it makes sense. And my understanding is staff will be bringing a report, right, with all the parameters and reasons and suggestions. Am I right? Yeah, so I would, I would move this. I will make this recommendation. Do you have a second? Councilor Crowe? Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Pass?
Thank you.
Yeah. And if I may, just ask a clarification. Director of Infrastructure, on page forty six, you talk about about the new well, right? Number six.
Yes.
And just a clarification to myself and the public. It says here that the additional of the well to the town system would allow the town to provide adequate water for an estimated population of seven point two, seventy two hundred people. So and then down the line, I think there's talking talking about ten thousand. And I remember the report, Waterline Report initially mentioned ten thousand people considering that twenty, that a third of the population was in the S C R D, but now we depend on on the water from the aquifer. Can you just just do a quick overall with this after this well here and what what's going to be our situation, please?
So again, with the information that we've got on hand, we and because of the reduction in our per capita water use, the same amount of water that was envisioned to serve seventy three hundred people, which was zone one and two, that same amount of water can now service ten thousand people because of the drop in in water consumption, which is a awesome win for water metering and and why I don't understand that it's not provincially mandated. You know, especially when you're talking about groundwater licensing and so on. So that's for starters, that's where we're at as far as the the capacity of the aquifer, we're going to be updating that or it will be in the budget for this year. And that would also be continually updated every five, six years to be looking at current conditions and make sure that the the modeled results are matching reality. And so any decisions that council is making along the way, short of making something that is going to approve development for another five thousand people right now, which you're not, obviously. We have lots of time to be able to respond. And so, you know, if there is a you know, perhaps a change in the act for then then, you know, you have lots of time to to respond to increasing demands on the on the water system. The, as far as well, six goes using today's per capita. As you say, we've got, I think it's seven thousand people or something like that, that that will provide water for. There is a plan for one, one more well to be drilled once we're kind of reaching that sort of capacity. And at this point, because that's fairly that's, that's probably the best location we've got for a well yet is where well six is. Chances are good that well seven would be in the same vicinity. And that would provide our means of getting that water out of the ground to service more development in the town. Does that answer your question?
Well, yes, I still want to understand because my understanding is well, six is quite recent, right? So are you saying well, six itself will provide for seventy two hundred people?
No, no, the addition of well six.
Okay.
In in addition to the current wells that we have brings the town's capacity up to that seven thousand people.
Okay, so you're saying seventy two hundred, but based in old consumption? Because any? No.
No consumption.
Current consumption.
Yeah. And and that even then it's it's conservative because we've, I think we were currently at around three fifty and we've used four hundred.
Okay, so and I think that's the part that I'm having difficulty. So where the ten thousand people come?
Where does that come?
Yeah.
Well, the ten thou, the ten thousand people is that that's generally been the I don't know, the the goal or the build out of the town. And that's the the num, the population that has been, some of our infrastructure is built around. And so if if this well or the addition of this well would give us the ability to service seventy three hundred people, one, one more well, we would hope, depending on how successful it is, would be, would able to to service the entire town. And the modeled and and the monitored capacity aquifer is also consistent with that, that there is enough water to service ten thousand people. So we've we've got the, we've got the water source in there that is the aquifer that is modeled to to provide enough water for servicing ten thousand people. And now we're talking about infrastructure, which is the wells in order to get the water out and delivered. And with well six, that would take us to about seventy three hundred people and then and then an additional well would be brought in to service the balance. And then the other thing too, as well as updating and keeping our annual water monitoring program that will be keeping an eye on the water levels in the aquifer, any changes, etc. And any response that the town needs to be doing, that's done on an annual basis. And so it's very, you know, very proactive program. We're updating right now. It's kind of scheduled every five years for the for the aquifer mapping set to be updated. That gives us another check, I suppose, and and the opportunity to update any of the predictions as far as climate change, snowpack, change of precipitation, sea level rise, etc. And and then the, and then the third thing is that three hundred fifty liters per capita is great. And that's a, that's a really good change and drop in in water consumption. Personally, I'm going for more than that or less than that. I'm going to to be pushing to drop that consumption below three fifty. And so you've got all these sort of things that we're, we're monitoring and keeping on top of in order to make sure that council's making informed decisions on future development.
I appreciate that. Sometimes can be a little bit confusing for all of us. That's great. And I really look forward to what a line study and and all the the projections. Yeah, that would be quite exciting. And hopefully we are in the right track. Thank you very much, Counselor. Any other question or? I think we can keep moving. Director of Infrastructure, please.
Yeah, so that that's going to be, I'm going to hand it over to Manager of Maintenance and Operations now for the operation of the maintenance end of things.
Okay, thank you for your report.
Good afternoon. This is Daniel here. So I'm looking at section eleven of the Infrastructure Services Report. On the water side of things, just going to highlight the main points, the main one being probably the zone three booster pump station and its operation. And it has been running quite I won't say completely trouble free, but pretty well since the late July when it when it started. One, one event that you might be aware of is it would be a C R D is they had mudslide near the, well, along Chapman Creek, which exposed the the piping, bringing water down to the to the treatment plant. And they contacted us Infrastructure Services and asked if we, if there was an event such as that where they needed to interrupt flow at their end, you know, with from Chapman Creek, whether we could assist in supplying some of the water. So we looked at our capacities, at our capabilities there in terms of what if we were to run all three of our wells at full capacity and as well as School Road Pump Station and and we, we did some basic preliminary tests, like I said. And we we could help them. So now we're going to have some more discussions in March on doing another test, which would involve them more directly on their side, on the S C R D side. As you know, last summer, as part of the water main replacement on the Reed Road, we installed the check valve there, which check valve only opens in the event that we we have a fire on our side or we turn a hydrant on and the pressure drops, then our pressure drops below a certain point, then we start getting flow from the S C R D. But there's also a smaller three inch line going the other way from from the town to the S C R D if we needed to. We wanted to send water up that way and we have a water meter on that. So technically, based on our test, we could do that. We could supply some water without affecting our, our own operation. So it's a, it's quite interesting. So that's what we're looking at. If you look at the I'm not hearing any feedback, so I'm assuming you are, you're able to hear what I'm saying. Yes, okay, good. The table that you see there shows the production for quarter four, for the fourth quarter of each of the three wells, well, number one, three and four, comparing the production in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. So as you can, and also the S C R D supply, you know, so in in the fourth quarter, we had seventy seven cubic meter compared to fifty eight thousand last year in the, for the same quarter. So basically it's small amount, you know, when we do do some of our valve exercising, or I should say hydrant, when we turn the hydrant on, you know, for various reasons. For instance, you know, if a new installation like the School Road housing development that's going on there, if they install water to that building, then at some point we need to flush. So we open a hydrant to get the air out of the system. And that would be an instance where we're we're using water from the S C R D, but they're small amounts. So when you compare the the total usage, you know, last year, this year from the S C R D is quite a big difference. So that will make a difference in our cost. Now, the one thing I should say though is supplying water from the new Parkland Booster Palm Station has required more input from our operators and and also some chemicals because we're adding hypochlorite, which is basically some a little bit stronger than JAVEX, you know, it's a chlorinated, we're chlorinating the water at a small level. And people in zone three have commented about the fact that the water doesn't taste so chlorinated now. And so that is why we are making sure that we're not underchlorinating, of course, but not overchlorinating either. So that has all this to say that there's chemicals added there and there's more people operator input and operator time dedicated to that station. Our water quality results have been good as they always are. On the sanitary collection system, we did, we did have an event that is no noted notable on Stewart Road leading to the plant. And that has highlighted some issues that we have, you know, we do, one of the maintenance tasks that we do every three to four months is flushing of some of some of the sanitary piping. And we use like special equipment for that. And this has highlighted one area where we need to do this on the, so we have a list of about ten locations, ten sections of pipes that we do on a regular basis. Anyway, all this caused this luggage there caused overflow one of the manholes during the night. And we noticed it in the morning. Thankfully, there was a ditch along Stewart Row on the west side of the road there. And it was absorbed that we cleaned the the superficial soil there and decontaminated it. We have to report this kind of event to the Ministry of Environment, which we did. There's no actual consequence. They realize that we saw the problem, we fixed it, we know why, and we're gonna act accordingly in the future. We also had an event at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm at eleven point five right now, if you want to look at that. But this is where we were doing we had, we had an issue with one of the air valve feeding one of the main reactors and we we replaced the actuator that that moves about. But it did not function, did not close quite as we were hoping to. And that ended up causing treated effluent but solids, more solids than we are normally supposed to be discharging to the ocean. And again, right away, the same day we we let the again, right away, the same day, we we let the Ministry of Environment know. Told them what we did, we told them what happened, the quantities, and we told them why this happened and how we're correcting it. And we are learning all the time, I guess. But this is one instance where preventive maintenance and full commissioning of newly installed components is important. One other thing that we will be doing in the coming weeks, we've already ordered them, the replacement ultraviolet lamps that we use at the very outlet of the plant before water, before treated effluent goes out to the ocean on fall. It goes through the UV treatment to kill any remaining pathogens that might be still present in the in the water that we're discharging. So this is a major maintenance coming up. Will not have any impact on the public, thankfully. This is not like emptying one of the batch reactors. Sewer discharge is a little bit higher than last quarter from last year, I mean. But I can't comment too much about it. There isn't any special reason other than it rains rain a lot, and we do still get infiltration from the storm system. You've probably noticed it got quite cold recently, so we've had our salters out and snowplows as well. We've also trained for additional employees on the operation of the large vehicle, the large snow plow and salting truck. So this is, I, right now, we have a very capable and a large group of people that can go out when necessary. Hopefully, we're done for the winter. Hopefully. Storm wise, I'm talking eleven point eight now drainage. We did have some very serious rain events. And in Sherman Creek, we did get some erosion. We do always get some erosion, but it was more noticeable near Gower Point Road. So this is being assessed and some some bank reinforcement work will most likely be initiated next fall during the fisheries fisheries window. At the same time as we do work on Beach Comer Lane further up Sherman Creek there, where we have a large culvert that is compromised. So we're going to do this work at the same time. Geothermal at eleven point nine. Phase four of the Parkland development is happening right now. And part of phase four is the building and installation of a storm pond there, just north of the the tennis courts. So we, the contractor, the developer wanted to, has asked, you know, to be able to dig that pond right now. So what we did is we emptied the field, the geothermal field, like one third of the all the geothermal field that are installed under the tennis court and next to the tennis court. So we did that with a local contractor and our own crew and the developer, the help of the contractor from the developer side. So that went fairly well. What allowed us to do this is the fact that we've been disconnecting several houses already, several homes in Parkland Phase One and Two. So we don't need as much heating capacity. So disconnecting this one field is not going to have any impact on the, on the rest of the homes that are still on the system. And this is all going fairly well, the disconnecting, by the way. So I'm not sure exactly how many we've got, but we're probably approaching twelve or fifteen now. Building wise, we've had, we hired a building inspector to look at all of our town-owned buildings, whether they're, whether we, we are using them ourselves or whether we're leasing them. So we have reports on the all thirty six buildings. So that will allow us now to plan maintenance for those buildings for the next several years. We have to prioritize where what are the most urgent repairs and maintenance that need to be done and on which building. But you can expect to see in the general budget some money requested for that. There's thirty six reports. We just received the report, so we we're we may not be the best prepared, I guess, for this budget year, but we will be able to put something together, a plan for the next five years. This is the graph that I typically shows for show for all the work requests that were issued during the fourth quarter. A lot of roads and transportation and parks, water, building and structure. So it's hard from this type of graph to go down in the detail as to why we have more roads and transportation. I can tell you, though, that we did have a lot of issues with streetlights this past six months. Tremendous amount of light lamp failures and it appears to be a supplier issue, the quality of the bulbs that were supplied. And yeah, that's pretty well all I can say without going into details of each one, but with parks, some of the work that was done, I'm now at item twelve point one. So these, these are just basically a rundown of all the items that were done. We did some important work at Dampster Park. Dampster Park has been unfortunately neglected quite a bit. This is an arrangement that we have with the the ball league, the Little Ball League, and has, like, we do certain things on it. But we, they're responsible for the general maintenance. And so we're talking with, with them as to what we should be doing when the contract comes, when the lease comes to renewal in the fall, as far as like whether whether they should keep it. I don't think they want to keep the maintenance contract. So the first thing that we wanted to do is to make sure the irrigation system was working. So that's what we've been working on there. We did a lot of work, Brothers Park continuation of the work that Tyler started there last year. We were assisting, and I'm not sure I got the acronym right there, but in the removal of the debris that came from the Gibson's Harbor cleanup and Plumper's Cove cleanup, a lot of BlackBerry work. And also removal of the floats at Armors Beach and the completion of the repair, the phase two repair that we had budgeted for. They were in pretty bad shape, so we worked on that. Installed several porta potties around town. And I will talk about it a little bit more in a minute. Removed ten dangerous trees following the heavy wind and rainstorm. We're working with the Friends of Parkland, a group of locals in Parkland in building up trails and the work around the pond. They're quite helpful. Did some work at Brothers Park and yes. So with regards to bathrooms, washrooms, we've been asked by the public and by council to add washrooms in key locations and also to improve the the way of finding where they are. So we've worked with our communications person, Elizabeth, and thanks to Elizabeth again, she's producing all these great signs and updating the maps and showing the maps in various ways, whether it's our website or Facebook or in the field itself. So we've been manufacturing those those wayfinding maps and the maps will be, yeah, posted on on the websites, on our website, but also indicating the opening hours. So because the, not all washrooms are winterized, we've added porta potties at like at Wine Garden Park, Dugle Park, Pioneer Park and the Parkland Tennis Court. So we have some other plans, and if you go to the website, you can see, you know, by the location of where they are and all this, what a little bit what we're planning on doing. But I can tell you that at Brothers Park, we have washrooms up there that are heated, but are not open at the moment. So they could become, we're looking at putting, this is in our budget, automatically opening and closing locks, similar to what we have at Armors Beach. Oh, should mention that the Rotary Club of Gibson's has donated some funds for maintenance and repair Brothers Park Field Number One, to the amount of two thousand dollar for the infield section and sending. So we will be using this in the spring. And also, it doesn't say there, but they also donated the three AEDs for us to install install at different locations in the town. So we have found a home for two of those. One will be at the Marina. So and we picked location based on their opening hours and whether they're manned or not. So the Marina, there will be a sign outside. It might already be there, but in the unit will be inside. And we put one as well at Armors Beach in one of the washrooms there. So again, the Armors Beach Washroom opens and closes automatically at seven AM, closes at ten PM. So we're trying to minimize the potential for death and vandalism. So we're still looking for home for the third one. And we're thinking potentially the curling rink or the pool. The pool might already have one, but curling rink is probably not a bad location. That's that. And then now we're looking at, yeah, the work, the cost, sorry, of labor for by asset for parks. So in the fourth quarter, so trails, streets, streets mean like downtown, streetscape type of thing. The lawns, the trees, sidewalks, so it kind of goes that way. And yeah, in the next little while, other than continuing to maintain the sidewalks when it snows and ices, we will be working at Brothers and Parkland. And we're prepping for the summer, the spring, I mean, basket, our baskets and things like that. So that's the gist of it for operations and maintenance.
That's great. Mr. Tardif, before we open the floor for questions, it's four fifty three. I know we we started over ten minutes later. Corporate officer, is it two hours meeting or do we need to make a motion?
No, it's, you can continue. There is, as far as I know, there is no need to make a motion to continue.
Perfect. I don't think, yeah, that's perfect. I don't think we need, we need to go over ten minutes, five, ten, but okay, so thank you. Any councillor have a question for Mr. Tardif? Councillor Ludwig, please.
Yeah, thank you for your report. It was, it's great. I was just wondering if the work that you guys have been doing up in Brothers Park with the the major maintenance you've been doing, spreading the eight hundred, or sorry, eighty tons of sand and all that. Have you guys been talking to the soccer club at all? You're doing that. I know, I just remember we got lots of letters of so sort of concerned about the the shape of that park. And I'm just curious if if the work being done is meeting their their needs.
Definitely. You're asking about if the users?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, Tyler has been in contact with both the soccer and the ball people and they, they're extremely happy. Like, if you go there, I don't know if you were there when like three years ago, let's say, but there was a lot of weed and very uneven ground. And there's been a lot of material added in the last year and a half, and that has evened out, the, that has leveled out, I should say, the field, but also at some point when the grass is very healthy, it takes over, it pushes the weeds out. And that's what seems to be happening. And the only concern now is dogs, you know, but that's not much we seem to be able to do about that right now, other than signage. But to answer your question, yes, we're getting very positive feedback from the users.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor? Okay, Mr. Tardif, I have a quick question regarding, a more general question, because actually in our meeting later on, there's a publication from the Council of Canadians, and they talk about the, the dangerously like high levels of lead in drinking water due to antiquated infrastructure. What is our situation here in Gibson's? Have any lead?
Like, a lot of our of our piping is either, like, the large, large bore piping I'm talking, is either asbestos concrete, cast iron, or the newer PVC piping and some HDPE piping. So lead would be more from galvanized piping, and there is some of that. But on, on the user side of, not, not from our infrastructure, but like the small bore piping that goes from the main, the water main to, like, from the water meter to the house, there are some of those in town and it would be worth talking about the program, you know. Obviously, we can't take that on, but we could encourage people, I suppose.
There are I just did a project there for a second.
Yes. Before I spend all the, the money there.
The direct, the drinking water officer, because this, this was a this was something that came to the forefront or came up again into the forefront a couple or three years ago. It could be five, knowing how time flies. And he indicated there were no concerns with the town of Gibson's. I think that there was a maybe some old schools or something that had, you know, someone had brought up that, that that concern. So he determined there was no issues with with lead in our water system and no, you know, significant concerns about any of our piping. We did, as far as the galvanized piping, we did actually do a program. Oh, man, probably at least ten years ago where we replaced all our galvanized piping. And when we, we've talked about this as well for the private side services, when we are doing water main replacements and if we come across any galvanized services on the private side, it becomes very difficult to, to actually connect to them. And at that time, we would likely be requiring the property owner to replace those because galvanized pipe, if it's in the ground, they stopped using it long enough ago that it is on the, if it hasn't failed already, is on the cusp of failing. So it, you know, be well worth for them to replace it at that time. But as I say, no, no concerns from the health officer.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate it. So any So any other questions from council? So move now to inquiries. Thank you, Director of Infrastructure and Manager. Thank you all, all the staff for that. So any inquiry, corporate officer.
At this point, I'll invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak to council to raise your hand and I will enable you to do. We have one question. That's Lisa Howard. Versus Sophie's.
Hi there. I just wanted to make sure that the meetings will be available on YouTube at some point.
Yes, it will. And the corporate can tell you exactly when.
Hey, thanks. That's all I got.
Corporate officer, how long does it take for, for the town usually to upload a meeting?
Well, usually I, they're recorded on YouTube Live. At this time, that was one of the issues that was causing the problem at the outset of this meeting. So I'm recording it through Zoom. I'm doing it differently, so I will need to upload it to YouTube later. I'm not sure, but probably first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, I was just, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I think we are done. So our next meeting will be. The regular committee of the whole to be held on Tuesday, March second, this year, three PM. So may. My turn. Anyone would like to, thank you, Counselor Lovely, Counselor Crow, all in favor. Thank you, everyone. So I'll see you later.
Good. Thanks, counsel. See you in a couple hours.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye bye.